All right, all right, let's get this party started.
Chat and never finish.
Better hurry.
I'll start without you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners Voting Session, today is September the 4th, 2025. Appreciate all of those that are with us in attendance, as well as those that are with us online. First up, we need to come out of Executive Session, I'll entertain a motion to come out of Executive Session. Motion by Commissioner Gaines, seconded by Commissioner Stowers, Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. Coming out of it. Broke it. For voting, to come out of Executive Session. And that is approved 4-0 to come out of Executive Session. Let the record show that all the Commissioners are present on the roll call. Ask everyone to please stand for brief invocation and pledge. Would bow your heads. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings of life. We ask for knowledge and wisdom to carry out the business of this county. Anything we accomplish will give you the honor and glory, in Christ's name we do ask and pray, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Are there any announcements on the board, any announcements on the board? Move on to approval of the minutes, first up, we have the minutes, the work session held on August 21st, 2025, any additions or deletions? Motions.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce, Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And those are approved 4-0. Next, we have the minutes, the voting session held on August 21st, 2025, any additions or deletions? Motions.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce, Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And that is approved 4-0, next up, we have approval of the agenda, have no changes to the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner Gaines, seconded by Commissioner Stowers, Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. Agenda is approved 4-0, has presented, no one signed up for public comment in this section? We'll move on to the consent agenda, on the consent agenda, we have request to accept Georgia Family Connection Partnership Kin Caregiver Support Cohort Grant, that was $3,300 with no match, and we have the 2026 payroll and holiday calendar, as was presented to you by our HR Director. Motions.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce, seconded by Commissioner Stowers, Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And the consent agenda is approved 4-0. We'll move on to alcohol license, new alcohol license, retail package sale of malt beverages and wine, Arush Business LLC doing businesses, Harmony Food Mart, 1128 Harmony Church Road, Dawsonville, Georgia, 30534.
Good evening Chairman, good evening Commissioners. Arush Business LLC, DBA Harmony Food Mart, 2320 Cross Springs Drive, Cumming, Georgia, 30041, has submitted an application for an alcohol license to sell malt beverages and wine for retail package at the following premise, 1128 Harmony Church Road, Dawsonville, Georgia, 30534. I'm pleased to report that the applicant has submitted all the necessary state and county documentation, and the licensee has successfully passed a criminal history check. With us tonight, Mr. Armpit Kumar Patel, the licensee is with us, who is available to address any questions that you may have.
Questions from the board?
I don't have questions for him, I have a question for you, in our just general processes, how many total package stores do we have in the county right now?
Total package stores, we have, I have to count.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine. I want to... Yeah, this is, this is not a package store, it's just a gas, it's a convenience store, so it already exists, it's just...
I'm not worried about this one.
Okay, um, so I want to say...
Wait, all right, let me ask you this, do we have a, and this is outside of the scope of this one, this one's separate, but do we have a cap on the number of package stores?
We do not currently.
Is that something that we can entertain within our ordinance changes?
I'm currently working on that.
Okay, thank you, okay, thanks, that's all I needed.
Any questions in reference to the license? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that we approve the alcohol license for Arush Business LLC, DBA Harmony Food Mart.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce, Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And that alcohol license is approved 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public hearing, this is a 2025 millage rate and property tax, this is the second of three hearings, first hearing was held at 11:00 AM on September the 4th, and the third hearing will be held at 10:00 AM on September the 11th. All right, so is there anyone here to speak on the 2025 millage rate and property tax, anyone? Anyone here? Seeing none, I'll close that hearing, this is the second of three hearings, as we stated, the third hearing will be on September the 11th, 2025.
I'd just like to make a comment, Chairman.
Go ahead.
I think Chris summed it up best this morning, he's a little more educated on this topic than I am, but I certainly do want to lay out a few points here. This year is very unique in the fact that we are having multiple exemptions that are hitting us at the same time that was voted on by our citizens. And not to negate the fact that there were needs for some of these exemptions, at the end of the day, it does not change our need as the board to fund certain positions, to fund projects, to fund salaries, salary increases. We certainly, over the last two days, heard a lot of needs from our department chairs. And with these exemptions, it does not negate the fact that our budget does not change, just we have a smaller pot to pull from.
And keep in mind, those, you know, like he's saying, increases for salary, needs for all of our employees, those are to provide the services to the citizens. So it's not just that our, our employees need higher salaries, it's that they do services for the citizens that we want to continue to give our citizens plus some. And so, you know, you know, we have to provide to staff that provide to you all. And I just wanted to drive that home, that everything that we do for staff is for the betterment of the county, the community, and the citizens.
Correct, and I, and I just think we heard a lot today about the need for some new positions, and yesterday as well, some new positions, and then some increase in, in wages as well. We certainly continue to have to compete with some larger counties around us, that we continue to lose, particularly public safety employees too. And so, on a continual basis, we are trying to be competitive in that field. And so, at the end of the day, even though we have, we have multiple exemptions that have come into play this year, we still have to fund these positions and, and find the money in order to pay these employees. And so, just something that we need to be cognizant of as we continue to have these public hearings, that although we have these new multiple exemptions in place, we're getting less funds because of those exemptions, but at the end of the day, our budget and our need for the budget does not change. And, and quite frankly, is increased.
Increasing, right.
Anyone else? All right. Like I said, the third hearing will be on September the 11th at 10:00 AM, at which time the board can vote on a millage rate, if they so desire. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business, re-adoption of an amended fee schedule tabled from August 21st, 2025, at which time we had a public hearing, so there is no need for a public hearing tonight, but, Richard.
Thank you Commissioners. So what's changed since August 21st, when the item was tabled, is that in your packet, you'll see that a comparison was done from different North Georgia communities, looking at both the per employee basis for calculating business license fee, and based on annual gross revenue. And based on that information and input, the revised proposal is that instead of $100 for the business license fee, annual gross revenue of $1 to $99,999, and $200 for $100,000 to $249,999, that would just become $1 to $249,999, would be a fee of 200. So again, those two tiers would be combined into one. And then, we also had two tiers between $250,000 and $999,999. Previously had two tiers, one at $400, one at $600, that would be combined into one tier. Between $250 and $999,999, that fee would be 600. And then previously, there was a top tier of $1 million and above in annual gross revenue at a fee of $800. And that's been proposed to change, where there would be a tier of $1 million to $2,499,999, that would be a fee of $1,000. And then for 2.5 million and above, it would be a fee of $2,000.
Questions for Richard? Thank you, sir. All right, in, in this, you're adopting an ordinance and a resolution. So, and Ms. Davis, we can do those together? Okay. If you so desire to adopt. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Okay, so wait, we're adopting and what, I'm trying to think how to say this.
Adopting an ordinance and a resolution.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the ordinance and resolution of the fee schedule, is that how you say that?
Second. Motion by Commissioner Bruce, seconded by Commissioner Turkett. Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And the ordinance and resolution for the amended fee schedule is approved 4-0.
I do want to say, I do appreciate you going back and working through that, you and Joey and staff, working through some of those tiers to, to make it, I guess, more well-rounded.
All right, so we'll move on to new business. First up, we have consideration of community development request to reclassify fire planner position to address needs of code compliance and maximize intergov software.
Thank you Commissioners, if you'd like, I'll be glad to go over it again, we hashed it out during the August 21st work session. I can go over it again if you'd like, or if you just have questions, either way.
I think we're good. All right, motions.
Make a motion that we reclassify the fire planner position in community development to better address the needs of code compliance and maximize intergov software.
Motion by Commissioner Stowers, seconded by Commissioner Bruce, Discussion. Hearing none, please vote. And that reclassification is approved 4-0. Next up, we have consideration of IFB 483-25, Georgia 400 Right-Away Beautification Project, that has two parts, land signs, doing the sign portion of that, $211,850. And then Mariana Enterprises doing business as Ed Castro Landscape, for the landscaping piece of 231 907, for a total of $443,757. And that money would come out of hotel motel tax revenue. Any other information needed? Motions.
Not information, but just discussion, I guess. Since we originally talked about this at work session, I think there's been some confusion potentially in misunderstanding by the public from some of the feedback that I've heard and seen, and fielded some phone calls. As we discussed in the, in the first work session, hotel motel tax is very specific to what it can be used for. It can only be used for certain things that promote tourism, and it's got a narrow lane that it has to stay in. Oftentimes, you'll see your office of tourism manage these funds, matter of fact, we collect 8% now, and 6% is, is you, is allocated to that department, and they manage that process. You know, it's, it's, it's been my pleasure to serve in this, in this role as a Commissioner and a fiscal conservative, and looking after taxpayer dollars, and I think, just based on what you were saying a moment ago, even this is a separate bucket of funds that's dedicated just for this type of use, it's still, it's still funds that we're responsible to efficiently and effectively spend in a manner that generates a... in a manner that generates a return on investment. I do think this project is needed. I think that the, the, it's been said multiple times, been proven multiple times, that that particular area generates a tremendous amount of sales tax revenue that helps us keep, and the chairman said it this morning, we are the seventh lowest millage rate in the state of Georgia. The only way we're able to accomplish that is by efficient government operations, being wise with our spending, and also a tremendous amount of sales tax revenue that's generated in that particular corridor. So it's extremely important that we not only look today and decisions we make today, but what does that look like five, 10 years from now? Because we want to keep it active and thriving and vibrant. And so, I think the project itself is, is, it's a good idea. I struggle as a fiscal conservative, spending that kind of money on a sign and on flowers or beautifications, more than just flowers. What I personally would like to see is, I think that we can take a step back and we can allow more time for more public feedback and input. It would be my recommendation that we allow the Office of Tourism, which manages these, a lot of these, 75% of these funds already, in order to take this, this fund that we have sitting here and allow them to gain additional public feedback and try to value engineer potentially this project down where we're still able to accomplish the same thing of keeping a vibrant and active 400 corridor and Allen Mall. But, but number one, getting additional feedback from the community and maybe being a little bit more value engineered on a project itself.
I just want to add, you may have said this, and I may have just not heard it in the beginning. I just, for educational purposes, I just want for the citizens to understand that hotel motel tax, which is where this money is coming from, it's, it's just that. It's hotel motel tax, meaning it, the money in that pot is from people traveling through here or people that come and visit and stay here. It is not our citizens' money. Now, like Chris said, it's still important that we utilize that and are very conservative with that money because we still have things that we, that need to be paid for here. But it's not our citizens' money. It's people traveling here, coming through here and staying here through hotels and motels. And then that money goes into a pot that can be used very specifically, like he mentioned, for, goes back into tourism or beautification for Dawson County. It's very limited. So I just, again, for education purposes, I think there is, people are misled on where the money comes from or why it's not being spent elsewhere. That's why. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
And a lot of the feedback, I think, was, was maybe shock and awe is a good way to put it, when they see, you know, a headline that says $400 and something thousand dollars on this project, not really diving down into the additional information that was given, that it is just that. It's very limited funds. But it'd be my recommendation today, or my motion, that we table the project today and we engage with Office of Tourism to see if they will pick it up, gather additional information, feedback from the community, and try to value engineer that project as well as continue to gain public impact on the way that those other dollars can be spent.
I'll, I'll second that. But I also want to reiterate too, you know, for a long time, I think that has been a little bit of an eyesore for, for our citizens as well as those people traveling through. And to that point, you know, you look at how much money was being spent, and some people may say, well, that's just some plants being thrown out there. But having a background in agriculture, if fescue grass will not grow on that hill, you're certainly not just going to plant these plants there and expect them to thrive. There was going to have to be a lot of work done on the soil improvement to try to get some, some better drainage involved, as well as some soil that would certainly be a little more accepting of some of these plants. So I certainly do not discount the fact that this area certainly needs some attention and certainly some beautification is needed there. But I agree, as a fiscal conservative, $443,000 is certainly a lot of money. And, and I think there was a lot of disconnect on where these funds were coming from. So I certainly hope that the Chamber, Department of Tourism, you know, will certainly try to address this same area with whatever is certainly maybe a little more fiscally responsible.
Also just going to add to that unpopular opinion here, but I think it needs to also be reminded that people want good services, but they don't want to pay the money for them. And people want beautification, but they don't want to pay the money for them. So I have a lot of discussions with people in the public and on phone calls through emails that they want the beautification, they want more services, they want more things, but they don't want to spend the money. They don't want us to, to charge more. They don't, you know, those things cost more. It's just like when you go to the store, it's called inflation. You go, things are more than they used to be. But guess what? You continue to buy it, you still need groceries. So you're asking us for services, but you're not wanting to pay more for those services. So if we're going to do things like make Dawson County pretty, a town that you enjoy, a community that you enjoy, that costs money. It also costs services by our department. So that is gonna, it's, it's, it's just gonna cost money. So I just want to throw that reminder out there is, you know, people, people want us to beautify it. Well, we can't do that without funding. And I know that $450,000 seems like a lot, but, you know, if you were to go and get quotes on just getting your yard done, mine is not done if you drive by it because I chose not to pay for it. So now I just have a yard that isn't appealing. But if you want the service, you have to be willing to pay for it. That's it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? Motion was made by Commissioner Gaines, seconded by Commissioner Stowers.
I guess the further discussion would just be to instruct staff to engage with the leadership at the Office of Tourism to see how they can best move the project forward and gain feedback.
And that is approved for O to table. All right, no one signed up for public comment in this section? Okay. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.